Eleven and we have eight board members. I welcome you all to the meeting. Let's please stand for our pledge of allegiance. They can place that flag right there. Mr. Chavez, can you lead us?
Yes, oh yes. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. This meeting is now called to order at seven eleven P M. I will do attendance. Ruben Chavez.
Here.
Angela Cadorte.
Present.
Marlene Fonseca, not present. Gamalil Andrade, not present. Michelle Corzantes.
Here.
Yoli Garcia.
Here.
Tom Williams.
Here.
Cynthia Sandoval.
Here.
Sasha Perez.
Here.
Manuel Chacon, not present. Victor Jun Ayala, not present. Luis Anna Valdez, not present and resigned. Capriya Baixio, present. We have quorum. There are eight members that are present, and we are now ready to begin. Now we are opening up to public comments. If there is any member of the public to speak about an agenda, an item that is not on the agenda, you are now having floor.
No, because it's on the agenda. It's anything other than.
Anything not on the agenda. Okay, seeing no public comment, we will move to number five. Discussion and possible action regarding the request from Barrio Action for L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council to co-sponsor a Thanksgiving dinner event on November the twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen, from five P M. to eight P M. at Barrio Action. The attached letter, and I've printed out copies of the letter. People need to see it over there. Request nine hundred dollars for the purchase of turkeys. In addition, the use of L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council sound system is being requested. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the motion.
I second that.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Chavez. I'm sorry, I'm going to stop for a second.
You need someone to record now.
Yes, I need a recording secretary.
We have the video. Somebody's gonna have to go back and do the minutes.
I'll transcribe.
I'll transcribe.
Motion made by Mr. Chavez, seconded by...
I'll write, I'll write. Put down now. It's two hours.
And then you can go by the video too as soon as I load it up time.
Thank you very much. Motion made by Mr. Chavez, seconded by Mr. Corzantes. And the... I'm sorry. Made by Ruben, seconded by Michelle.
Do you want to use this?
I'll transcribe it. Because yeah, you don't write like discussion.
No.
Yeah, so that's...
Okay.
It's just a review.
Thank you very much. So the... The motion is... As followed. Can I hear the motion that you're making, Mr. Chavez?
Read the motion. Discussion.
Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding a request from Barrio Action for L A thirty-two N C to co-sponsor the Thanksgiving dinner event on November twenty-four, two and two thousand fifteen, from five P M. to eight P M. at Barrio Action. The attached letter requests nine hundred dollars for the purchase of turkeys. In addition, the use of L A thirty-two N C sound system is being requested.
Thank you very much for your motion.
You are.
Now we are opening up to public...
Comment.
Public comments and discussion. All right, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Karen Memery. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Detective George of Barrio Action. I'm in the family sector. Everyone, thank you for giving us the opportunity this year to actually come before you and request funding for our annual Thanksgiving dinner. So that is dinner now for fifteen years. We started when we were at the old, next to a Trumahico building. And we started with a very small group. It was just really for our clients and then group. And now we service, we actually serve dinner for over five hundred people on a sit-down dinner every Thanksgiving. And then we have, we, through the years, we learned that there were a lot of people who came very late at the end of the dinner. Were not able to have dinner. So we implemented, five years ago, our take-out project. So we do over, you know, approximately seven to eight hundred dinners. We do about two hundred. Last year, we did three hundred take-out. This year, I think we're running the numbers as high as probably nine hundred this year. So we're a little concerned with, you know, the group of... Because what we do is we have twenty-five tables with ten people. We bring the people in. They have dinner. We wait for them to sort of have dinner and dessert, and then clear one of the tables and bring... Last year, it was a lot of folks waiting outside. So we are praying for great weather so that people are not too cold outside. But I did want to, you know, come on and talk a little bit about what we have done in the previous years and that this is the first time that we come before the Neighborhood Council to request any funding. Typically, we, you know, get a lot of donations. Unfortunately, the government, local office, they don't get turkeys to you until the time that they give away to the community. So it's typically maybe Monday before or Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So the funds will really go to buying the food for the dinner itself. So I wanted to make that clear in case it wasn't coming across as why we need the money and why we need the money for the turkeys. When we are, in fact, gonna get some turkeys for the families. We have, you know, we service over twenty-six hundred families right now. So we have a lot of families that are in need of not only the food that they're gonna have at the dinner, but also the turkey and all the turkeys. And that's what we hope to do this time. So if you guys have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
I'm just helping. I knew the letter was sent out on September first. Was it sent to about the forty-nine twenty-seven Huntington address?
It was sent, it was sent there by mistake. I think that Marlene did not give us the address, but it was also emailed to her. And I think it was, we had emailed her back in late August and how to actually, what was the process. And so she just said, you know, to do like a letter, who to ask and so on. So one of my staff did that. And she said, you know, we needed before the trouble meeting. And so that's why it was sent out that day on September first, I believe, and it was emailed to her as well. So I was a little, I was a little disappointed that it did not come to your board in October because it would have been plenty of time for you guys to say yes or no, you know. And so we didn't know what was going on until we were, you know, somebody had reached to us again and said, you know, we need to bring it back to the, you know, more proper way. And so here we are. And I apologize that you guys had to actually have another meeting in addition to your regular meetings at the beginning of the month.
Maybe someone for the community to tell me for you. I can be sure there's a...
Yeah. Harvey, Harvey.
Thank you, never a question. So, you know, we hope that we see you guys, whether, you know, you're partners or not. We hope that you can come to the dinner and help us, you know, serve food. That's when we need the most help. You know, serving the families, serving the folks who actually you guys represent in this Neighborhood Council. So I hope that you all can make it and come out and give us a hand.
Thank you very much. Now I'm gonna go through around the board to see if there's any discussion. Yoli, was there any discussion?
None this time.
Tom? Michelle?
Quick question. Just if we purchase them from Smarter Final or Food for Less, do we need to be on the liability, certificate of liability? Or is it something that we don't? If it's a private vendor, do we need to be on the certificate of liability or not? If we are, if we do decide to go with this, move it forward and approve the amount and purchase the turkeys? That's how I see it. Because eventually the treasurer will have to go pay for them. And I know funding does ask for, to be on the certificate of liability.
So for the event organizer? So this, you're talking about Barrio Action?
Where are they going to buy the turkeys? Yes. Because eventually, if we co-sponsor, I'll have to go buy the turkeys. If they purchase from Smarter Final, Food for Less, Big Savior, do we need to be on the certificate of liability?
You know, from experience, when N Cs do a co-sponsor event, they are normally asked to be added, which is something, you know... But when you submit the event approval form, you know, check out for the appropriate boxes.
Okay.
And then funding will advise you.
Directly have a...
More specifically.
Okay.
And then that, well, that would just need to be done. Should the board approve this tonight, it needs to be done right away.
First thing, yes.
It's already listed.
Can she include us in, through her corporation or through her group, whatever the name of the group, Barrio Action? Can they, since they're having the event, then there's, we're just co-sponsoring. Doesn't matter who we buy the, who we're co-sponsoring. And there is food and all that, the liability on that. Can she include us? Because she has insurance to cover the same of all kinds of activities that they have, you know.
Yeah, and normally that's the process that...
No, I'm asking a question to her.
Yeah, we'll be having to add you as a...
Insured.
A one event insurer for that event. You know, we can have our insurance do a certificate for that and provide it to you guys.
You have settled it.
Okay.
That was... I'll change it to...
That was a sidebar.
And, you know, just so that you guys know, we are, we are, you know, cover, I believe, for any kind of events, three million dollars for anything that happens.
Right.
And so I don't know what your requirement is. If it's more than three million dollars, let me know. Then we need to...
Address that.
Some of charity.
Yeah, I'll do that first thing in the morning. I'll probably go down there again tomorrow morning. I was there today and I'll go down tomorrow. Take care of that.
Thank you very much. Is there any other questions?
No, that was just my question. That's it.
Great. Angela, you're good? Oh, Sasha?
I'm sorry.
Okay, wait, let me go through one first. Sasha?
No, I'm supportive of...
Cynthia?
No.
At that time, a few years ago, I was a member of the bicentennial committee. And they staffed it. I was part of the staff for that particular dinner up there. And let me tell you, I had a blast just enjoying to see the people from our community come and participate in this event that this beautiful lady puts on. She's the executive director. She has, you know, all the kudos for beautiful things that she does here. And this particular event, I think it's very meaningful, and I hope that the board supports it a hundred percent. Glad that she came.
Fantastic. Thank you. Michelle?
Just that we are on the flyer. That's it. And I'll email you the logo. Because we have one that's a little clear.
Yeah, we have a few sponsors. The fire department that are put tables. So they can do the flyer. The council member, Alves, Foyle Tech, they come and support our project. And so there's a few, there's a few great groups.
But we will be included on the flyer, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to clarify. Fantastic.
He knows that.
And then the sound, we'll make sure to get it there as well. I'll probably have a community member help me set it up. The obama's not able to.
Hold on a minute first.
Well, no, I'm just saying when it, when it approves. Because if Obama's not able to, I can get a community member who knows how to. Actually, we trained them on how to set it up.
Okay. Fantastic. Yes.
Just kind of information.
Yes.
Beautiful lady was a, is a past president of this Neighborhood Council. Many of you may know this, and some may not. But anyway, she's familiar with the mechanics of how this operates. Obviously, there have been changes like tourism. Everything else in the world is always changing as time goes by we evolve. But she has a knowledge of how it works. That's why she had no problem in terms of the insurance and putting us on that.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you. And I break, and so we now have concluded our board discussion. The only comment that I have is that I, if we go ahead and approve this or if not, I recommend that as many people can volunteer as possible. Thank you very much. Yes.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I won't be able to volunteer. I'll be out of town. But I've recommended everyone else does.
They feel the need.
Because I know they're fantastic. I know they do fantastic work. I had a chance to visit one year, and it was absolutely fantastic. So with that, we now have a motion on the floor. That was made by Mr. Chavez, seconded by Miss Corzant, Mrs. Corzantes. And we've had public comment, and we've also had board discussion. We are now ready for a vote.
Can I read the motion first?
It's a roll call vote.
Yes, a roll call vote. And the motion is...
That was five or six?
Five.
Thank you.
Number five.
Discussion, I'm sorry. Should I read it?
I'm gonna read it.
Oh, okay.
So it has to be in a motion now. So the motion is that the board... Please correct me if I'm wrong. The board approved the request from Barrio Action for L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council to co-sponsor Thanksgiving dinner event on November the twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen, from five eight, from five P M. to eight P M. at Barrio Action. The attached letter requests nine hundred dollars for the purchase of turkeys. In addition, the L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council sound system is being requested. Okay? Yes, so that is the motion.
Okay. Would you like me to do a summary?
Yes, please.
Ruben Chavez?
Yes.
Cynthia Sandoval?
Yes.
Sasha Perez?
Yes.
Capriya Baixio?
Yes.
Angela Duarte?
Yes.
Michelle Corzantes?
Yes.
Tom Williams?
Here.
Yoli Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, zero, zero.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So now we are moving on to item number six.
Madam President, I have a little point of clarification. I would like to ask...
Okay, I'm sorry. I have to keep it moving right now.
Okay, but it only takes a second. I just want to ask what kind she wants to volunteer for.
Okay, okay. We can clarify that afterwards, or you can ask her personally.
Well, she'll be gone by then.
But right now, we have to move on to item number six.
I already know the information.
Discussion and possible action regarding L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council participating in the Christmas Kids Day event hosted by Tender Loving Covers on December the fifth, twenty fifteen, at Our Lady of Guadalupe Church from one P M. to five P M. L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council is invited to have a booth for outreach and the use of L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council is requested for use at the event. Okay, you can leave.
The word "sound" is missing. Are the audience, what are you called? Sound system is missing. And it's not Guadalupe Church, it's school. So we would have to amend that motion.
Well, this is just discussion. This is not a motion at all.
Okay, so that's just discussion.
Okay, yes, it's just discussion. So could you make, are you making a motion for it?
I cannot make the motion. But somebody else?
I'll move it then.
Okay, what motion are you moving? You need to, it needs to be specific because that's last one was, I want you to be specific. What's the motion?
Okay, I can read it over then.
No, no.
That discussion and possible action.
No, we don't need that part.
We don't need the discussion and possible action.
The motion that L A thirty-two... They put the word "motion" that...
Correct.
That L A thirty-two N C participate.
Okay, the motion is that L A thirty-two N C participate in the Christmas Kids Day event hosted by Tender Loving Covers on December fifth, twenty fifteen, at Our Lady at Guadalupe School.
Okay, wait, wait one second. I'm sorry. Are you, are you not making the motion because you're recusing yourself? Because you're a part of Tender Loving Covers?
I don't have to refuse myself because it's not a funding matter.
Okay.
I am actually not speaking on behalf of Mr. Chavez.
Okay.
The only clarification I wanted to make is that it's a school and not a church.
If she refuses herself, we're no forum. It ends there.
Exactly, but...
But we're going to because there's no funding. No funding, we're just using...
But I'm not an employee. I'm a volunteer as well. So there is no benefit to my pocket.
No conflict of interest, in other words. That's the key.
I've already, I've already established that.
It's not a funding matter. We're just saying the booth for outreach. That would basically make it a disagreement. There's a lot of...
Okay, I'm sorry. Then go ahead. I just wanted to make...
Well, we have the gentleman from ZAN. Can he clarify a little better for us?
Tell us my question, why I'm not being able to make the motion. I was wondering if there was a particular reason why. So that does, I try to find it as well.
So, so go ahead, Mr. Chavez.
For Our Lady of Guadalupe School from one P M. to five P M., L A thirty-two N C is invited to have a booth for outreach and the use of L A thirty-two N C is requested. The sound system, the use of the L A thirty-two N C sound system is requested for use at the event.
So you moved the motion, Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Okay, say that a little louder. So you moved by Mr. Chavez and seconded by...
Seconded by Sasha.
Okay, thank you very much. You're being, I'm not, I'm not trying to bother you. It's just that we're trying to record it. So I just want to make sure we can hear. Okay, moved by Mr. Chavez, seconded by Sasha, by Miss Perez. Are we, then it's now open up for public comments. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing done, we are now moving to board discussion. I'm going to start with Yoli. Any board discussion?
Well, the N Cs, they're not asking for any funds from the N C. The sound system is there. And if a board member can take care of taking it there, I support it. On that particular day, I know that I cannot help out. So I'm just saying as long as there's somebody who can, you know, manage that, I don't see why not.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I'll be moved.
Okay. Michelle?
I support it. There's no funding, that's great. And just as long as there is someone that will help with the sound system, to transport the connecting it, board member or constituent that is familiar with that. Because the keyboard or the, what is it? The thing, the mixture is a very sensitive, a little gadget and stuff. But it's assured that somebody does this all.
Okay. Angela? Sasha? Cynthia?
No.
I would have loved to have gone and helped out with a sound system. But since I'm a scout master, that particular day there's scout training at all the levels of scout training, including Spanish speaking for the scout for the San Gabriel Valley. So I will not be able to attend or participate. But I hope the board votes for it, that it's needed.
Bless you.
Any further board discussion? Any comment as to who will be able to help transport this back and forth? Or actually be there?
I will be on location. So I will have that discussed with Lisa, which is the founder, and myself, and with Michelle, Marlene. This doesn't have a sign-up sheet or anything.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll discuss.
Fantastic. Wonderful. That will be down by date. So fantastic. Okay. So is, since we have no more board discussion, seeing done, this is now ready to go for a vote. All those in favor of the motion?
We need to read the motion first.
That's L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council participate in the Christmas Kids Day event hosted by Tender Loving Covers on December the fifth, twenty fifteen, at Our Lady of Guadalupe School from one P M. to five P M. L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council is invited to have a booth for outreach and the use of L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council sound system is requested for use at the event. Okay, that is a motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All of those abstaining, I mean, all those opposed. All those opposed, raise your hand. All of those abstaining, raise your hand. Thank you very much. It passes seven, zero, one. Moving on to item number seven. Discussion and possible action regarding L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council providing funding up to one hundred dollars for the purchase of suitable holiday decorations and/or trees for the El Surino Senior Citizen Center. Discussion and possible action on agenda for ad hoc senior citizens committee meeting scheduled eleven, twelve, fifteen, one P M. to three P M. At the El Surino Senior Citizen Center.
Very nice.
Okay. So with that, this is discussion and possible action. So we don't have a motion on the floor. Would someone like to bring a motion so we can open it up to public comment? Okay, what is the motion that you're making?
Um, I move to have LA 32 Neighborhood Council provide funding up to one hundred dollars for the purchase of suitable holiday decorations and/or tree for the El Surino Senior Citizen Center. Discussion.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a wording that's not, there should be not to exceed one hundred dollars.
Well, it says funding up to, it's the same thing.
Up to, there you go.
Yeah, so that's the thing.
We're used to saying not to exceed because we don't ever want to go over.
So with that, the motion was made by Ms. Perez. Do we have a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Chavez. Now we're going to open it up to public comment, the motion. Seeing no public comment, we're going to now open it up to board, board discussion. I'm going to start with Yoli. Go around.
Actually, is it possible to give to the committee members?
Yes.
Actually, I'd like to amend.
Before we have a board discussion? I mean, okay, before we have board discussion, you're going to open it up to the committee members first?
Yeah, the chair, please, or whoever's in the committee.
If she wants to amend, she has priority over that.
She's following the order, so let's just take it one.
She wants to amend, they don't like that.
Because I think one of the second members is Mr. White. So that was your comment, Yoli. Okay. Next, we'll have Tom.
We did hold the committee meeting this afternoon.
Okay. Thank you.
And we discussed all of the other agenda items also for the committee meeting. And this one, we had a really interesting meeting. And one of the issues was that we would recommend increasing the amount. And we recommended in our resolution to increase the amount from one hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars because we're quite concerned regarding use of fire retardant on the tree to, I say, give it a little bit more fire protection within the building.
Okay.
And that was the only real issue that was. But again, it's up to because even the people there don't know exactly how much it's going to cost for fire retardant and how tall the tree is and stuff like that. So as long as the provision is made, up to, but I say not to exceed.
Thank you very much, Tom. Now let's move on to Michelle.
Yes, I'd like to amend, Madam Chair. That LA 32 provides funding up to two hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase of a holiday fire retardant tree for the El Surino Senior, for the El Surino Citizen Center. So I'm pretty much increasing the amount and taking out suitable and putting a holiday fire retardant.
And you're taking out decorations as well, right?
Correct.
So it's only the tree only, correct?
I'm taking out holiday decorations.
So twenty fifty dollars for a tree?
Correct. Up to.
Okay.
Because it'll be most likely a fee for the fire retardant.
It's common, Tom.
Hold on, before you comment, the board needs to decide if they want to accept the amendment. So does someone second it?
I just want to clarify.
Hold on, Tom, okay. So this is.
Okay, so the motion, so now the amended motion.
Is that going to read it for you, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
That LA 32 provide, that LA 32 NC provides funding up to two hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase of a holiday fire retardant tree for the El Surino, for the El Surino Citizen Center.
Okay, and that motion was made by Ms. Prisantus and seconded by Mr. Williams. Dr. Williams. Okay, for the, so now let's have, we're going to take it back around. I'm going to start with Yoli again and I'll get to you. I'm sorry, I know this is annoying, but I'm just trying to go in order. Okay, so on the amended, on the amended motion. Yes.
Um, since Melvin is here, is this an acceptable amendment?
You know, it's reasonable. I mean, it's, you know, if the board considers that it's reasonable amount, then the board can accept it or not.
Tom?
Yeah, we did find that the senior club already has ornaments for decoration and stuff like that. So there was no need to include any money for ornaments that go on the tree. They will also provide a stand and watering for it. So there's no extra things. Uh, we're still trying to find the suitable vendor for the tree. Uh, then the senior citizen has used various groups before. So the only question is being a suitable as far as from the city's concern a vendor for the tree. Uh, we may be able to provide transport for the tree from wherever it's at to the center. And once it's in the center, then it would be the responsibility of the senior club.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Michelle?
Um, I increased, I amended the increase because nowadays a tree, one hundred dollars is probably like three, four feet tree, relatively. Not only that, it, you know, it starts adding up the little bucket in the bottom, the little woods that holds it, the, you know, putting it in your car and you know, all these charges. You know, we guesstimated about two fifty. But obviously, if we can save and keep it at one hundred, you know, we will. But just to be safe, that's why we went two fifty.
Thank you.
No, Mr. Williams answered my question. I was just concerned about decorations.
Fantastic. Ms. Perez?
Yeah, Michelle just answered my question. I was just wondering like why the, I've never bought fire retardant before so I don't know how much that would be there, so.
Ms. Sandebow?
Uh, just that I've been involved with the decorating of the city center throughout the years and other than other community organizations. And we used to go and decorate. So frequently, we have provided current and we do take care of all of this. So it's not a lot for that. And the height of the ceilings are very tall. So it's going to depend on what we can get as far as filling up that, that upstairs. So yeah, kind of because of all the way we're doing. So I support the motion.
Thank you.
I also support the motion. I have three questions. Uh, you said you did not use the word senior center. Is there a reason for that, sir? Can you say anything about that? I'm curious. Why was it, why does it read center instead of senior center?
Uh, I vote.
Pardon?
I vote. Actually, a senior citizens center, it won't be official type of that.
Yeah.
Although they have issues regarding citizens. But I say that's another issue.
Okay.
Down later.
Fantastic.
So.
I, I have a, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but Michelle, the amended motion, what did it say? Did it say senior? I remember you saying El Surino Senior Citizen Center. Is that correct, Callan Red?
Correct.
Oh, correct.
It's going to be center.
Okay, so senior citizens center, that's what it says in the language in the motion, amended motion right now.
So we're okay.
So what's the amendment that came?
Let me, I'm going to, because are we?
Then I haven't had a question.
Okay, once we get done, once we get done with public, with the board discussion, then I'll read the motion again before we vote on it. Okay, so Yoli, you said you have, you're the last person, I believe, with.
No, I'm not done yet, though. Except I have three questions.
Oh, okay, well, wait one second. I'm going to go to Yoli's and we can.
But I'm not done talking yet.
He could finish and then I'll.
Okay, I thought you were, I thought you were finished. Okay, so you can, you can finish yours. Go ahead.
Okay, the other question is that, I don't know if it's a live tree or not. Um, and the other question is it an indoor or outdoor tree? And those are my questions. I don't know who was, are you qualified to answer that first?
It'll be a suitable one for the location, so it's indoor.
Great.
And that's one of the reasons why we have the fire retardant. Senior Club has said that they will provide all the watering of the tree and such.
But it is a live tree opposed to an artificial tree that you could use every year?
Uh, it will be a live tree.
Okay, that's fine.
Not an artificial tree.
That's fine.
Oh, at this time, artificial trees, no.
Is it going to be flogged?
Maybe next year.
Okay, is it going to be flogged? The bikes got to put on it.
Okay.
Uh, that's up to the senior.
I think, yeah, right now, this is, I think we're limited in our discussion as to the purpose of the tree, not that.
Yeah, but that is. I asked if it's going to be flogged. That's the purpose of the tree.
My question, um, my question was with Mr. Chavez's ask whether it was going to be a fresh tree, an artificial tree. And I was just wondering if that discussion took place in committee, um, which, what kind of tree would be best, you know, to invest in as artificial or to have a fresh tree?
During the discussion in the committee, there was no specific discussion regarding artificial versus, quote, living tree, live tree. Uh, might say it's just the, the timing of it and everything like that, I think. That we were told by the senior club and others that they always had, quote, as a live tree before. And it might be a suitable discussion for next year. Artificial trees might go beyond the two hundred dollars depending upon the size, height, and it also has to be flame resistant retardant and stuff like that. So it is a good subject and we'll reason and see what can be done for next year.
Thank you. So we have, this is our second time go around. We had Yoli, we had Tom, Michelle. Any further comment before we vote?
Um, we didn't want an artificial. We didn't even talk about it because we, we, we just, in our minds, in our hearts.
I'm sorry, it's only on the amendment right now.
Oh, we're still on the amendment?
We're still on amendments.
Wow, I thought we were discussing it.
No, we're still on amendments.
No, I already had my comment on the amendment.
Anything else on the amendment? I just wanted, anything else on the amendment?
Sorry about that, that worked.
Anything else on the amendment?
Yes, it's, Tom mentioned that the discussion for next year, uh, but that it gets.
I think right now we're going beyond the amendment.
It's just the amount?
Because now, yeah, next year.
Increase to two fifty.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Thank you. So we've had board discussion on the amendment. So now let's vote on the amended motion as follows. That LA 32 NC provide funding of up to two hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase of a fire retardant tree for the El Surino Senior Citizen Center. All of, all those who approve of the amended, amended motion, raise your.
Roll call because we have a phone.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. It is roll call. Yes, roll call.
Ruben Chavez?
Yes.
Cynthia Sandebow?
Yes.
Sasha Perez?
Yes.
Capricia Baixio?
Yes.
Angela Duarte?
Yes.
Michelle Corzantes, yes. Tom Williams?
Yes.
Yoli Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes on the amendment eight, zero, zero.
Zero.
Okay. Now, is there any other comments on the general motion now? As amended, no.
So we're now on the regular motion, right?
Yes.
As amended, okay. Uh, as Tom mentioned, that it may be a little more expensive for an artificial. And it's okay, they didn't even discuss it this time. They didn't even think about it. That's okay. Uh, but the artificial, even though it costs more, imagine if you're going to have this every year, every year, whatever it costs will supersede whatever the expensive tree of the artificial[1680.04]